Their homes to practice social distancing. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and charter cable channel six and AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.gwendalca.gov, by scrolling the all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, as you may see on the screen, on the right side of this way, this side of your screen. Please don't call in advance of the agenda either. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during this special meeting. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Pissakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda for the Tuesday, May 19, 2020, Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on Tuesday, May 19, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Number one, Community Development Art Entertainment District was removed from today's agenda. Number two, Community Development Regarding Authorization to Negotiate with Up to Two Startup Accelerator Propusers to Develop and Implement the Startup Tech Accelerator Program. One, Motion Authorizing City Manager to Negotiate and Execute Professional Services Agreements with Children's Hospital Los Angeles, Kids X Digital Health Accelerator, and Hero House Glendale for the Operation and Program Management of a Startup Tech Accelerator Located in Glendale.
Ms. Yasmin Beers, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council, good afternoon. We're very excited to be here this afternoon to provide you with information related to the Tech Startup Accelerator Program. As you all know, we were the recipients of a million dollars through Senator Portentino in the state of California, of which we're very thankful for, for us to have this opportunity to be before you, to provide you with information and ask for your approval to move forward with the next steps. To provide you with information related to these items is Jennifer Herramoto from Community Development, and she's our deputy director, and I'll pass this on to her, and she will provide you with an outline of what today's presentation will be, as well as introduce our speaker. With that, Ms. Herramoto.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. Good afternoon, Mayor Agajanian, members of council. Today's presentation culminates in effort first launched by the Glendale City Council in 2016 with the development of a strategy to bolster the ecosystem of technology and innovation. Obviously, it is a much different reality today than it was in 2016, but today, at a time when recovery, economic recovery, is at the top of all of our minds, and supporting small business, who account for nearly two-thirds of the local economy here in Glendale, is paramount, I am excited to present yet another opportunity to bolster the local economy with the prospect of introducing not just one, but two accelerators to the city of Glendale. There we go. So, just a quick presentation. I'll go ahead and provide a little bit of background. I know that we do have two new council members joining us on this journey now, followed by the RFP release and response, and then finally with the recommendations. Here, we are joined by Cecilia Estolano, the CEO and founder of Estolano Advisors, who assisted in the development and the implementation of the Glendale Tech Strategy. Also on the line and available for questions, and I believe that they will also be speaking during public comment, are representatives from Grid 110 and Hacker Fund, as well as Hero House and Smart Gate Ventures, and Children's Hospital Los Angeles. So, a little bit of context, so going back, the City Council adopted this Glendale Tech Strategy in 2016. Ironically, at the time, one of the inspirations was to help the local economy become recession-proof. We will see how this pans out, but in 2016, we had about 1,000 firms in tech, and we tracked some of the educational attainment levels, and you can see the progress on the right. We now have about 1,100, almost 1,200 firms in tech, and market improvements within educational attainments, including those graduates with a STEM degree. I'd also like to point out today, just based on some recent figures, that our top-ranked sector within Glendale is healthcare, followed by professional, scientific, and technical services, and then retail trade. So, why startups? Well, first off, they're job creators, and not just minimum-wage-paying jobs, these are good wage-paying jobs. These are type of jobs that we want in our local economy. These are also revenue generators. Not all of these companies are, do they generate sales tax, but they do have employees, which in turn will help fuel the local economy. They also have the potential to be high-growth, and you have seen this with local examples such as Age of Learning, Service Titan, and Beyond Limits, a local AI firm. And finally, most importantly, in today's era, is that they're problem solvers. We cannot, I stress enough right now, with a pandemic that we're all facing, innovation is really going to be at the forefront of what is now being dubbed as the flexible economy, as we're coming up with new ideas to get us to the next phase. So, as part of this tech, the tech strategy, one of the recommendations, and there were about 60 recommendations, was that we need to come up with a place for tech, a space for tech, and some of this was to create some of these co-working spaces. We've been successful in attracting those, but also to provide more diverse types of locations where businesses and the startups can grow, and that includes accelerators. Startups also need specialized office space and support, including mentorship, investment, and other services to help their growth and success. And apparently, magic happens when founders have a chance to meet one another, and it's that type of serendipity, even if it is virtual right now, that we are striving for. Just quickly, what is an accelerator? So, these are cohort-based programs. Typically, they're time-specific, so it could be 90 days to four months, could be up to 10 companies in one cohort or class, and then they would rotate through for, there would be about two to three programs, two or three cohorts a year. These are highly competitive programs, and you get high-quality startups, so the companies do have to compete for this. They start with a narrow pool, or, excuse me, a large pool, and then they're narrowed down, and again, entrepreneurs are supported with mentorship, access to resources, and hopefully, access to capital. And each class culminates in a demo day. So, we've seen this somewhat similar to the Pitch Fest that we've had during Glendale Tech Week, where you've seen these companies, they get on stage, they pitch, hopefully there are funders in the room as well. That would be the hope through this, through the demo day. So, we, the city did actually try an RFP in 2018 with a modest budget of $50,000 a year, which council authorized. We received five applicants, three were actually qualified, but ultimately, it was recommended not to move forward because there weren't enough companies that were supported with public dollars, the curriculum just wasn't strong enough, and there appeared to be a lack of partnership with the established brands. And I think what we've learned throughout this entire experience is that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts, and that if we're going to be successful in having an accelerator, you have to have strong partnerships with the school districts, with Glendale Community College, with the established companies that are here. There's many people that support this ecosystem. So, like all good startups, we used that first experience, we pivoted, and we adjusted the RFP to generate a more robust RFP that emphasized enhanced partnerships with established brands and offered a larger budget. So, just, I know that there's always a lot of curiosity about the RFP process and the outreach that is aligned, or that goes into that. I have here on the left just an image of the Disney Accelerator as well. We do have an accelerator in Glendale, Disney runs it, it's very, it's focused on media and entertainment, but it's very focused on that. So, and they were part of our outreach as well. But through our outreach, once we got that million-dollar grant, we continued to reach out. We had about 70 conversations with different accelerators, operators, ecosystem builders around the world, to get their input on how to effectively operate an accelerator. We visited accelerators, and we also had three community events as well, again, to generate some more feedback on how best to set this up. And there was a lot of interest. We heard from about 50-plus operators, and this is just a sample of those who expressed interest, we had about 25 corporate partners who emerged from this, and this included local companies like, wait, excuse me, .818 and Beyond Limits, and our Chamber, Glendale Community College, and of course, our startups. We really wanted to make sure, if we were delivering on a program, is it going to be useful to them? One of the things, one of the topics that emerged from that is whether we should have a focused accelerator. Should it be on a particular type of industry? Should it focus on a particular demographic, such as women-to-own-founders? Should it focus on artificial intelligence? And what was decided was, and you'll be happy to know, we're really great at a lot of things in Glendale, and we did not want to box anybody in, we wanted the operators to tell us what would make sense for Glendale and the greater region as well. We're not just trying to get on first base, we're going for home runs here, and we really want to make an impact to the greater community. So, we came up with this RFP, million dollars in funding, you saw this in December, broken into three years. As part of this, the city would also offer up 250 North Orange, it's a city-owned space of 2,500 square feet. We're looking for a qualified operator, somebody who has done this before, and hopefully, someone who's looking to expand into Glendale, any vertical or sector would be okay, and the timeline is presented before you. I will say that we kept with the deadline, and I'm very proud to say that with a few dedicated volunteers on the selection committee, and passionate proposers as well, we were able to keep that schedule because it was all agreed that small businesses will need more support than ever right now, and not only in the form of grants, but real services that they can hopefully utilize to take their business to the next level. So, with that, I would like to turn it over to Cecilia Estolano, who was a member of the selection committee, and she can get into the RFP release, the goals, and then recommendations.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor Agajanian, and members of the council, delightful to be back with you again. We are really excited to present to you the results of the extensive deliberation of the interview and selection committee. Let me do a little bit of background to remind you why an accelerator, why is that one of the, what are the goals behind the accelerator? As Jennifer noted, we're trying to build an ecosystem here, and one of the ideas here is you've got a lot of emerging companies, you've got a terrific culture here in Glendale of entrepreneurism and startup. When we drafted the Glendale Tech Strategy four years ago, there was great culture, but people didn't know each other, and that's been knitted together over the last four years through a lot of the efforts of your fine economic development department. But one of the other recommendations we had was the need for an accelerator, to take some of the best, most promising companies that you have emerging in Glendale, and give, wrap them with support, and wrap them with mentors, and everything to take them to the next level, to really become the next service titan, if you will. And what we've learned in startup culture is, wherever the founders are, usually where they're from, becomes the beneficiaries of their growth and expansion. So, you start with a rich culture and a rich fabric of entrepreneurs. If we can keep them here, rather than being lured to the Silicon Valley or Silicon Beach, Glendale has the potential then to reap the benefits of their success. So, we wanted to give those emerging companies the tools and the mentorship they need, we wanted to make Glendale, put it on the map as an innovation hub. You have an accelerator that has a robust support system and a good budget, people start to come around Glendale, see it to be the place where you can get your C-level employees, your CFO, your COO, your CEO. And then lastly, we wanted to have that generation of revenue and economic activity that comes from scaling up the growth of startups. So, that's what we're hoping to do with this accelerator. Let's go to the next slide. So, we've talked a little bit about these objectives, launch, operate, start up the accelerator. We wanted to set forth some clear metrics. How do we measure success? You cannot improve what you cannot measure, so we set out some of those metrics. We wanted to make sure that this accelerator could become self-sufficient after three years, and we really wanted to have this notion of recruiting local companies and to take them to scale. We'll keep going. Next slide. So, we had a pretty intense selection process. An RFP was developed, we worked with Jen's team to develop the RFP. We had learned a ton from the outreach they did, the 75-plus conversations, the three community meetings. So, this RFP was really well-baked, really well-informed by a range of folks in the startup community, here and elsewhere, that RFP went out, and then we were able to recruit a pretty terrific selection committee, not me so much, but the other folks on the selection committee. Again, Chris Lucas, who's a venture capitalist here in Glendale, who's put, has ties deep in Glendale, your own attorney, Julian Danudin, Alex Bruno, who's been a fixture in the Chamber of Commerce, R. Elsmanian, all brought with them, and Elena, all brought with them terrific background on not just business, but workforce development, and what it takes to scale up, attract investors, and to have a successful business, and they put a lot of time into this. So, we met for numerous hours, reviewing, and I'll go into how many proposals we received, but folks spent many, many hours reviewing the proposals, working on the questions, interviewing the next round of folks, and really going back and forth to do due diligence around some of the key proposals. And you'll see on the right side of this slide that your staff did a tremendous job independently verifying the props of the folks who put together the proposals. People look great on paper, but it's another thing when you actually go and check the references, and that was a really helpful step. Next slide. So, I'm not going to read these to you, you guys can read, but the criteria was very detailed, we actually created a scoring rubric that the committee used. We were looking at what was in their proposal, what was their approach, did they actually, had they actually done this before? Did they have financial capacity they could bring to Glendale, or were they just trying to get everything funded by the city? We wanted folks who could put some skin in the game. And then lastly, and this was super important, what is their commitment to Glendale? There are plenty of accelerators and incubators all across the country, they franchise, they do this all over the place. We wanted a group that actually either had its roots in Glendale or cared deeply about Glendale. We wanted them to have some commitment to the city, because this is about growing the capacity of your entrepreneurs here in Glendale. Okay? So, let's go back, oh, 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 it's okay. So, remember last time, the first time we did this, $50,000 over three years, three years, $50,000, $150,000 total, we got five applicants, three were kind of qualified. This time, we got 20 proposals, a lot of them were outstanding. So, we took those, and you can see the list, it's kind of a who's who of incubators and accelerators from around the region and nationally. Then we took that down to nine, that we thought were the very top, and there was general agreement about that top tier, and then we did extensive interviews with each of these proposals, each of these teams. Okay, so, here's where we ended up. Our recommendation is to actually get you two for one. When this proposal was conceived, we thought we'd get one accelerator for a million dollars for three years. We were very, very pleased to see Children's Hospital LA come in with a proposal that far exceeded our expectations, because they were going to put money into this game, they were going to actually have a first pediatric-focused health accelerator in the world that was going to draw upon all of the other children's hospitals nationally, who were also investing their money into seeing the success of the products and ideas being generated out of the accelerator here in Glendale, and that was tremendous. They wanted a physical presence in Glendale because of your strong health focus, right? Because this is a center of healthcare in the region. So, but they only needed half the money. That was the amazing thing. They said, we know, we only need half a million dollars, and we're going to put together this amazing accelerator program, we're going to take money from other children's hospitals, and even better, there's a commitment from each of those children's hospitals to take some of those products or ideas and actually field-test them in their own hospital, to help work with the entrepreneurs on conceiving of the products and ideas that are going to be advancing pediatric healthcare internationally. So, that's just that ideal type of mentorship and on-the-ground testing of products that you can't buy. I mean, it's very hard to get that, and they brought that to the table. Okay, so enough about Children's Hospital, we fell in love with them, they're fantastic. Now, we also noted that when we put out this proposal, this RFP, we didn't say we wanted a particular industry, we really, truly were agnostic. They came in, it happened to be one of the strongest sectors you have here in Glendale, healthcare. But, so we were like, okay, great, we've got a healthcare proposal, we have half a million dollars left, let's look at the next few rounds. Okay, so we'll go to the next two. So, we also got two proposals that we had a hard time choosing between, very different. First is Hero House, and they proposed two programs, again, they had all assumed they would get the full million, right? So, what we got from them was two programs, they would post 20 companies, they've already had a very successful model in Armenia, incubating companies, they have relationships with companies here in Glendale already, like Service Titan and the Armenian Engineers Association, and Draper University in Northern California. They already had a venture fund here through Smart Gate, so they were very interested in kind of landing their companies that they'd incubated in Armenia into Glendale, that's pretty cool. And they also had a local support program that they were interested in launching, but broadly, broadly tech, not very specific about a particular sector. It seemed to be a nice compliment, you've got the healthcare very, very focused, put Glendale on the map for pediatric healthcare, and then you have something that's more broadly tech and has an international bent to it. So, we thought they were terrific. The next one that we also looked at is Grid 110 Hacker House. Quick. Oh, sorry. Okay, so, so what we figured is, Hero House is terrific, they had proposed for a full million, so we went back to them and said, what could you use, what could you do with half a million over three years? So, they gave us a couple of options. One is to take their gateway to LA cohort, folks who had already taken off internationally, and bring them to Glendale to kind of take it to scale, and they could also do a scaling heroes program here in Glendale. Altogether, they could assist about 30 companies, which would be fantastic. What they did say is, you can't have both programs, you kind of have to choose, and so they gave us a couple of options. Okay, so then, the next one we considered is Grid 110 and Hacker Fund, completely different. Grid 110, I actually know them from Los Angeles, because in the middle of the recession, they got like a tiny little bit of funding and some free space in the old gas company building in downtown LA, which didn't have a lot of use for a lot of their space, and they are this scrappy accelerator-incubator model. They would do cohorts based on different industries and started to have some success. Teaming up with Hacker Fund, they also have this kind of social profile, too, they're really interested in trying to incubate nonprofits that have social benefit missions as well. Again, very different than Hero House, and very different from Children's Hospital of Los Angeles. It was a close call, but what made the difference for us in recommending Hero House over Grid 110 Hacker Fund was kind of like two things. One is, Hero House already had established relationships in Glendale, they were eyeing another site at the MetroLink station, which would also be great, right? Because you'd have Activated Orange, but you'd have this nice TOD, Transit Oriented Development area in your MetroLink site. They had deep relationships with Glendale already, really, really got it. The second piece is, they also were bringing some money to the table, they had established relationship with Smart Gate Ventures, and we could see that they had, they were putting some skin in the game. Not to say Grid 10, 110, and Hacker Fund are excellent, they're good as well, but when we went back to them and asked them, what could you do with half the money rather than the full amount, Grid 110 got de-emphasized, Hacker Fund was more emphasized, and we were a little worried about that, because we actually fell in love with the team, not just Hacker Fund. So, altogether, our recommendation of the committee unanimously is that you award half a million dollars to Children Hospital as the clear top tier, and then award the other half a million to Hero House. So, I want to make sure we, I don't want to spend more than, you know, a few minutes giving you that presentation, but that's, in essence, what we did. I want to say a few more things about this. It is, so, Glendale is a very special place. It's a very special place. It has this entrepreneurial culture, it has a rich ethnic culture, it has an immigrant culture that I have to tell you is part of why you have so many startups launching and growing here. Hero House taps into that, but it doesn't tap exclusively into that. It can appeal to other companies, other startups, it brings a range of international investors, it's pretty different, and we think that it fits that unique blend of entrepreneurism, kind of scrappiness, boldness, that exemplifies Glendale. We think it really gets you. So, that's why we recommended that your second half, Hero House, second half of the million go to Hero House. And with that, I'll stop, and happy to answer any questions. I do also want to give a lot of credit to the rest of the selection committee, they worked very, very hard, many, many hours of reviewing the proposals, doing these interviews, talking about the interviews, all for free. It's a really tremendous committee. So, you guys are very blessed to have that group of folks here in Glendale, who would just do this for free and spend literally hours and hours and hours on this. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
I'll just ask first the question. I mean, what happens that if we allocate 250 to Grid 110 and 250 to Hero House?
Mayor, that's a great question, right? That would seem to be kind of the easiest way to split the baby. There is a scale issue. Remember when we first proposed doing this, and we talked about 50,000 a year for 150,000, we got very few takers, and the quality of the program was much diminished. In much the same way, when we took it from a million to half a million with, say, Grid 110 Hacker Fund, their proposal was a lot less robust, and likewise, Hero House wasn't able to offer the full suite of their program that had initially drawn us in. If you take it another halfway down, you really are kind of losing the benefit of the investment. At some point, you have diminishing returns. So, our recommendation is that it's better that you really just bet on one of these horses. You know, they're both very good. The reasons why, and I've gone through the reasons why we recommended Hero House over Grid 110 Hacker Fund, but I think if you keep making a smaller investment, you really won't get the benefit of that investment, it's better to just combine it, and you will get that scale that you want. So much of this is about developing a cohort that gets to know each other, that has the mentorship, that gets to know the investors that that incubator or that accelerator is bringing to the table, and if they aren't getting as much money invested by the city, their attention might go elsewhere, they might work on other ventures. So, it's, we just think this is about the right scale, about a half a million dollars, really would launch it off for either one of these.
Usually, the problem is that the mind is set to $1 million, and then you say, come and get less.
Yeah.
That's different, but otherwise, there are lots of companies, even large companies, even if you have offer of a project of $250,000, they still, they will come forward. Now, their mind is set for 1 million, it's hard to make it one quarter of it.
But we also set, we also set some standards, right? We want to see, we want to see 10 or 20 companies come out of each cohort, we want to see them fully invest, we want them to attract investors, we expected them to come in and help run tech on tap, we expected them to do Glendale Tech Week. Our expectations are pretty high, so, and they should be. You all have done a lot on essentially a shoestring budget with just your staff time. If you want to take it to the next level, you've got to really get the full package. So, if you go from somebody's expectations of a million to half a million to 250, you're really not going to get that much. And remember, this isn't an individual company, this is about drawing in on all of their partnerships, all of their relationships that they've developed over a career, so they've got to be in it. It's just our recommendation.
But I, to me, things has been changed, it's hard to get any project or any business anywhere right now, so, I don't know. Is any, is there any other comment by my council colleagues, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, on Hero House, a couple things, I guess. They talk a lot about Draper.
Yeah.
Has Draper, what's the relation, has Draper invested in them?
So, I don't know if this is a time if we can do this technologically, but we do have the benefit of all of these three teams being on the line, and to be honest with you, I'd rather have them speak for themselves, if that's okay with your legal counsel and with your city manager, because I think it would be better for you to hear from them, if that's okay, councilmember?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how you guys do this technologically. Boom.
Are they on WebEx?
I think they are.
Yes, they're on WebEx, and we have Asha and Humbert Sum on the line.
Yeah.
And they may be able to answer the mayor's question directly as well.
Correct.
Regarding the $250,000.
Because they can answer that better than anybody about what they could do with 250.
Hello, it's Humbert Sum from Hero House, Tim.
Hi, Humbert Sum.
Hi, so, yeah, so I'll So yeah, so I'll answer the question about the relationship with Tim Draper. So Tim Draper is not only an investor in our fund, in Smartgate, but we also have, we are working together on some other projects together. So maybe just few, few, let's say, joint activities in the past that we did together. So government of Armenia provides scholarships to 15 students every year to go to study at Draper University in Silicon Valley, and it's something that was completely orchestrated by our team. Then there was a meeting between Prime Minister of Armenia and Tim Draper in September last year, and again, we, we were those who were around this meeting. And moreover, the Hero House team is, so we have agreement with Draper University that Hero House team members, every, so, so here, so Draper University runs three programs, three hero trainings a year. So during each training, there will be a special person from Hero House who is going to join Draper University team and help run the program. And I, I can, I can continue the list as there are also some other results of joint work, but yes, Tim Draper is investor in our fund and we work together also on some other projects.
And if I could continue, so how much is Draper invested in your fund?
I'm not sure I can disclose it, but it's, it's a few hundred thousand dollars.
And, okay, and you mentioned, you know, deep relationships in Glendale. Can you talk about what those deep relationships are?
Of course. So we, we have SLPs as investors in our fund, also few individuals from Glendale, and we have co-investors with us, also some people from Glendale. Besides that, already five companies from our portfolio so far, we invested in 17 companies. So five companies from our portfolio already have some sort of presence in Glendale, whether they have office here, operations, that's, 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 that's so far. And also, it was in the proposal also. So we, we established a unique partnership for Hero House Glendale here with companies like Service Titan and Disco. So the way it works, that their professionals, their team members, let's say product people, salespeople, marketing people, they will be actively engaged in Hero House Glendale working with startups. So they will provide not only talks, but also, but also they will have office hours and one-on-one meetings with the companies that are going through the Hero House Glendale. And moreover, so Vachov Sepian, who is currently Senior Vice President at Service Titan, he is one of the people who is now on hold on this call and happy to provide his comments during the public comment portion.
I have, I, I mean, I guess I have one other question, if I could. I think a big part of your plan is, and maybe it's the, the majority, is this, is this gateway concept, right? Bringing companies from Armenia into Glendale. My understanding is that this, this has been tried many times in many places in the world and has generally not worked. It's very difficult for a foreign company, foreign entrepreneur to make it in the U.S. It's hard enough for U.S. entrepreneurs to make it. Some Israeli companies have been successful, but other than that, it's not been a successful model. What makes you think that you can make a success when so many other people have failed at this?
Good question. Thank you. So from those 17 companies that we investing during the last two years, already two of them raised each of them three million seed rounds in U.S. and mostly from Silicon Valley, which, which you know is very, very competitive. Five other companies, I think six, six other companies went through different U.S. accelerators, including YCY Combinator, which is one of the best, again, based in Silicon Valley. And it seems we are, we've figured out this, what we call in our industry product market fit, how we approach our business, what kind of relationships and when and how we should establish to help our portfolio companies. Because we help our portfolio companies, we're connecting them with customers in U.S. and usually it's their first customers and it is usually done with our help. We help them bringing onboard also co-investors from U.S. or follow-on investors, which is also very important. And one more comment, so we don't always specifically focus on Armenian entrepreneurs. I, I want to make it this very clear. So we see Hero House Glendale as an international accelerator. Of course, we start from Eastern Europe and Armenia is part of it, but we have Sinhagian presence also in other countries of Eastern Europe, from Poland to Russia. So we want to make it clear, so this is an international, so the proposal, in proposal, it's an international accelerator which targets international founders and we want to start from Eastern Europe. Why Eastern Europe? Because it's an immersed, it's really impressive emerging wave of entrepreneurship happening in Eastern Europe now. And many of them look at the U.S. as, as their target market. So with our presence there, we think that we can, and our connections, our network also in U.S., we think we can, we can enable really good match of technical founders from Eastern Europe because in Eastern Europe, founders are very, very technical and they lack necessary business knowledge, which is one of the main challenges to succeed in U.S. markets. So one of the main pillars of Hero House program is we want to also enable this matching of business founders from LA area, from South California, to technical co-founders from, from Eastern Europe, which means, yes, we say it's international accelerator, but we also are going to do a lot of work with local community to enable this kind of matching, which is win-win for everyone.
Okay. Is there, Councilmember Nigeria?
So I'd like to thank the committee, the selection committee, for all their hard work. Elena, R. S. Lanyan, Alex Bruno, Gillian, Chris Lucas, and Ms. Estelano. This is a particular area that I'm not super familiar with, so I'm placing a lot of weight on the work that they have done. And I am pretty much going to support their recommendations to go with the Children's Hospital for 500 and the Hero House for 500. I think once you start splitting that second half of the 500 amidst the Grid 101, I think you do start losing the economies of scale that make it sustainable. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm going along with the staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor? I believe we have a number of the proposers on the WebEx. If we could, if they want to speak, have them address the council, and then there are another six folks that are on the phone to speak on this matter before council.
So we go to the next applicant, right?
Correct. And perhaps Mr. Moto can introduce the proposers that they want to speak and then, and then go to, we'll go to the callers.
Great, yes. And I believe some of the callers are, some of the folks who have proposals wanted to use their public comment portion of the time to give a brief presentation of their proposal. So if it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to Omkar of CHLA to give a brief presentation and overview of his proposal, and we can then follow by Hero House and then Grid 110.
Okay.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor, I'm Johnny and city council members, thank you for your time. Jennifer, thank you for your leadership in this innovative venture. And thank you, like everyone said, to the selection committee as well for your, your time. It seems like many of you have volunteered your time and your commitment, especially right now, given how chaotic things are. So my name is Omkar Kulkarni. I'm the Chief Innovation Officer at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles. I've built and I run the Innovation Studio, which is the innovation program for Children's Hospital. But I, I wanted to just make some brief remarks and so thank you for allowing me to do so. You know, right now is a very strange time for all of us. I think the fact that we're having this meeting on WebEx probably speaks largely to that. But it's also a time to invest, to invest in entrepreneurship. It's a time to invest in healthcare. And I think you can probably all imagine as to why I'm saying that. So our proposal, which I'm very proud of and I think will make a very big impact, both here in the city of Glendale as well as, you know, nationally and even internationally, will be able to allow us to invest in both entrepreneurs, the future small businesses and future growth stage businesses in our community, as well as the people they impact, right? So the kids and the families that'll be impacted by the technology that they build and ultimately serve. So for me, this is both about economic growth as well as impacting the lives of children who are being completely impacted right now because of COVID-19. What is impressive about Glendale that I have come to know largely thanks to Jennifer and her team is that we are, what we're doing here is we're not just building something from scratch, we're building on an ecosystem that already exists and we're just making it that much better. And we're doing it in a way that I think allows us to do it strategically and smartly. Like you said, there's already Age of Learning, there's already Service Titan, and there's big companies like Disney and others that are leaders in innovation already in Glendale, already doing work that I think reflects what we're looking to do here. So we can, we can kind of stand on the shoulders of these, these giants and, and see how we can build the next great set of solutions for pediatric healthcare right here in Glendale. As you said, it's a big part of the economy in Glendale and I think it's going to continue to grow. I think we're going to need more people working either directly or indirectly in healthcare, given the state of the environment that we're in now. And I think the need for healthcare will continue, and I love the idea of Glendale being global center for innovation for pediatric healthcare. As was mentioned, this, this program, Kids X, which we are launching at CHLA, will be first of its kind. It is the first consortium-based program, the first pediatric digital health accelerator anywhere in the world. And we have 15 children hospital, Children's Hospital partners from all over the, from all over the country as well as from internationally as well. That's incredible. And I think as, as was discussed a few minutes ago, a key part of our secret sauce is the fact that we have these partners, both from a sustainability standpoint, because they give us revenue and membership dollars to, to help grow this program beyond the month, the great money we potentially get from, from the funding, from this, this grant. But even beyond that, they provide these entrepreneurs with, with mentorship, with feedback and a test lab, a place where they can pilot their technologies. And for those of you who work in healthcare or know anything about healthcare, that's the hard part. The, the difficult part is having those partners who are willing to open their doors and say, yes, let me teach you, let me coach you, let me give you an opportunity to test your solutions here. So in conclusion, I'm very excited to hopefully be able to partner with all of you. I think it's an incredible thing you're doing in investing in entrepreneurship in, in the city of Glendale and betting on the future leaders of, of companies that will grow in scale. I hope to be able to be part of that journey and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we go to phone calls.
You have one?
Wait, two more.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to turn it over to a representative from Hero House, just to give a broad picture overview of, of the Hero House proposal, and I, I think no more than three minutes.
Okay.
Yes. First, we want to thank the City of Glendale Economic Development Division for its recommendation of Hero House Glendale and the whole selection committee. So briefly, the Hero House Glendale is not going to be only structured program, something that we are applying for, wait for this grant. So the vision for Hero House Glendale is much wider. We want to turn it into one of the leading tech hubs in LA during next three to five years. And the way we want to do it, again, is it's based solely on our experience, so we are talking about something that we did in the past. So we are going not only work with companies, with startups, but we're also going to initiate and run various activities, programs, organize different events, participate in community to develop this local community and help youth to gradually enter tech, which in our opinion gradually will turn Glendale into a tech hub. And our part, our, some of our key partners here will be AESA, Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America, and GCC, because they also have a good presence in GCC. So we want to work with students, GCC students also in this direction. So another point, which is again very important besides running the, the program, is we want to consolidate around Hero House solid scientific and technological potential. Of course, first of all, we think it will be easy for us, sort of low-hanging fruit, to tap into Armenian network of scientists and engineers, because so far, we see there is a huge potential that we can consolidate around Hero House, which will bring into Glendale a lot of value. And last but not least, so we are committed to establish a community of angel investors around Hero House. So there is a angel network located in Glendale, which will significantly, in our opinion, help Glendale to turn into this tech hub, which is core of our vision.
Thank you. Is there more? Or we go to?
Yes, sir. There's one more, and this is Grid 110, the, the third proposer. And on the line, we have both Grid 110 and Hacker Fund. So Mickey, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Hi there. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak today. My name is Mickey Reynolds and I'm the Executive Director and Co-Founder of Grid 110. We appreciate the opportunity to represent our joint proposal with Hacker Fund, which is incredibly aligned with the goals of the accelerator RFP and the economic development priorities of the city. Over the course of the past two years, I've come to know the team at the city of Glendale as well as several key stakeholders that have been involved in this process. I've seen the dedication and commitment towards building Glendale and the surrounding region into the thriving startup ecosystem that it is today. I've appreciated how open the team has been with this process through their many convenings and outreach efforts, which further emphasizes the priority to serve the needs of the local community first. And that is how we got here today, a community effort where everyone feels like they're a stakeholder in this process. We recognize that several of the city's priorities and the expectations for the economic development are in line with ours, to highlight local innovation, to support a wide range of entrepreneurs from small business owners, high-growth companies, and to integrate local community in our efforts. At Grid 110, have built one of the leading communities in Los Angeles, fully state founders over the past five years. We have an expansive network of investors, mentors, and partners. Our programs support a wide range of businesses across various stages, business verticals, business models, and funding pathways. We recognize the importance of supporting diverse companies at the earliest and most critical stage of their business. On average, we support 40 companies a year who have the courage to start a business and the resilience to take it to the next level. At a time when young businesses are facing the most challenging time in their history due to COVID-19, we're trying to connect them with all available resources around relief, workshops, lending and funding options, and most importantly, community. We understand the importance of community and supporting companies where they're at, and we want to bring all of this to the city of Glendale. And while I'm not a Glendale resident myself, I want to ensure that the local area is the immediate beneficiary of any grant funding resources. By hiring locally, partnering locally, working with companies locally, our goal is to ensure that the space, the resources, programs, and community are accessible to all local entrepreneurs, as they will be the ones to build up this region, not us. Inclusivity matters, accessibility matters, feeling like you belong, especially as an entrepreneur. And that's exactly the type of startup ecosystem that we want to support the growth of here in Glendale. And I'd like to hand it over, if it's okay, to my partner, Justin with Hacker Fund.
Hey, folks. My name's Justin. I'm the Executive Director of Hacker Fund. Thank you to everyone who's made this process possible today. As one of the most prominent community organizers for the technology community in Los Angeles County, our team at Hacker Fund is confident that our proposal with Grid 110 will ensure that the Glendale Tech Strategy established by the council in 2017 is carried out despite the restrictions placed due to COVID-19. Our team has served over 30,000 people through our program since 2014. We've partnered with five different cities. Our most recent success at the city of Compton demonstrates that we are exactly what you are looking are looking for in an operator. We know how to work locally. We want to make Glendale as the place for tech, all kinds of tech. We want Glendale to be a home for entrepreneurs, a diverse home. In doing so, we will ensure that Glendale is promoted as an inclusive business environment. Right now, it's important for the City of Glendale to allow entrepreneurs, business owners, its students and community members at large to feel together even when they are apart. We are specialists in building online communities and urge the City Council to choose an operator who will ensure that Tech on Tap and Glendale Tech Week continues full steam ahead as part of the Accelerator Plan.
Thank you.
That concludes all of the proposers and I believe there are folks on the line.
Can we go to the callers then?
Yes.
All right.
How much time, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How much time?
How much time? Three minutes per person.
Vache Hofseppian, you're live?
Yes.
You're live, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone, my name is Vache Hofseppian, SDP with Service Titan and one of the early joiners of the company. Thank you so much for this initiative. As a Glendale resident, I can tell you this is exactly what the city needs and the people need. I'm personally very excited. Would like to take a couple of minutes just to talk a little bit about my familiarity with Hero House and Smartgate. I have personally interacted with the gentlemen who have started the initiative, both the Hero House, I've visited, and I can confidently say that their experience truly will come very handy in what we are trying to accomplish here as a community. I have, also can speak personally to their integrity and their vision that goes far beyond sort of limited impact, again, what I think the, the city and, and the initiative really is aiming to accomplish. And then finally, want to validate what Hambartson said about our commitment as a company, Service Titan's commitment to support this initiative in any and all ways that we can, including having some of our subject matter experts, that being the engineering team, technical team, or more business development, sales team, et cetera, to partner with Hero House, Glendale and to work with companies that will be housed there and, and, and help them in any way we can, support them. That could be in form of sort of joint project, it could be in form of workshops, lectures, et cetera. We're also, we've also offered to host those companies at Service Titan, share our journey with them, share our lessons learned, et cetera. So I think those were the main things, happy to answer any questions, of course, and thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Next call.
Albert Gomez, you're live. Albert?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
I was just calling to support Children's Hospital Los Angeles with the Kids X proposal, with the Kids X Accelerator. I didn't, I went through the 140-something pages of the proposal, I think it's extremely consistent and I especially think there is a big value on the mentorship program that they are proposing as, as part of the whole proposal. So I just wanted to reinforce that I think this is a very, very solid proposal.
Thank you. Next.
Alex Bruno, you're live. Alex?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. My name is Alex Bruno, I'm a business and startup attorney with my office located in Glendale. I also currently serve as the Chairperson for the Board of Directors of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. I had the privilege to serve on the selection committee for the Startup Accelerator and I just wanted to echo what Ms. Estelano and Ms. Herramoto also presented on. Briefly, I want to express my support for both Children's Hospital Los Angeles as well as Hero House. With these two operators, we have an opportunity to position our city as the leader of the startup ecosystem in our region and beyond. Both applicants have a proven track record of developing and assisting entrepreneurs and companies. The addition of the Kids X Digital Accelerator and Hero House Glendale adds significant contributions to our local economy and our community as a whole. It won't just stop there. Adding these two accelerators will assist our city in fostering the growth of new companies that will not only add to our local community, but can create an impact globally. I wholeheartedly encourage our council to adopt and move forward with staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one.
Miran Tumajan, you're live. Miran?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Briefly, I want to express my support for both Children's Hospital Los Angeles and the Kids X Accelerator. Can you lower your, the volume on your TV? You're live.
Yes, yes. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I just wanted to take this opportunity, my name is Miran Tumajan. I serve as the Western Region Director of the Armenian Assembly of America, the nationwide nonpartisan nonprofit advocacy organization established in 1972 in Washington DC. I manage the Western Region operations of our nonprofit advocacy group. We are bridge builders between the United States and the Republic of Armenia at all levels of government and among civil society representatives in both countries. I've gotten to know Hambartson and his team over the past four or five months and, and gotten to, to learn about Hero House through my colleague, our director and Yerevan RP Vartanian. Hero House Armenia is, is a magnet for tourists visiting Armenia, just like the Tumo Center, which is globally renowned. Hero House is a must-visit when, when Americans and, and people from all over the world visit Armenia to, to see how that model is really making a difference in the lives of, of tech entrepreneurs, young tech entrepreneurs in Armenia. And that model can certainly be replicated at Hero House Glendale. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank the City of Glendale's Economic Development Division and the, the selection committee for their sensible and wise recommendation of Hero House Glendale for brand funding. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one.
Eric Martin, you're live. Eric?
Hi there.
Hello.
All right, I imagine you have a full agenda, so I will make this quick. I'm calling in, in support of Children's Hospital Los Angeles and the Kids X Accelerator. I am a partner with a healthcare venture capital firm called Wavemaker 360. Our headquarters is in Pasadena, just down the road from you all. And I've had the pleasure of knowing Omkar Kulkarni during his time at Cedar Sinai and then at Children's Hospital Los Angeles. Just want to speak to his impeccable reputation for working both with early-stage companies and with large institutions. Bridging that gap is not often a simple task. This particular accelerator program represents a very unique effort, kind of at the intersection between healthcare and technology, something that we are quite passionate about and would love to see this develop within the City of Glendale. And, you know, happy to share more thoughts, but I can't think of a better use of funds, a better activity to really promote both the city and this type of work. And I would also highlight the fact that this accelerator model that CHLA has developed really is a gateway to institutions all around the country and really will have national prominence as it develops. So that's really all I wanted to share. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next.
Eleanor Heapy? Eleanor, you're live. Eleanor, you're live.
Hello, my name, hello, my name's Eleanor Heapy and I've been a resident for 40 years in the City of Glendale and have raised four kids who went to our great schools. I believe it is important for our city to continue to stay on the forefront of business investment and innovation. The proposal for building a digital health accelerator in Glendale is an excellent idea to facilitate bringing tech to Glendale. And there is no organization more capable of doing that than CHLA because of its longstanding history of research and innovation and its deep existing relationship with other research institutions like USC. For me personally, I believe CHLA is an amazing resource in our community and healthcare innovation is incredibly important. And with CHLA, the, its ability to incorporate an additional focus of pediatric healthcare is especially crucial because it's often underrepresented in the healthcare innovation space. So I want to call in and to offer my support for this proposal and I hope to see an accelerator program come to the City of Glendale sponsored by CHLA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Juan Espinoza, you're live. Juan?
Yes, hi, this is Juan Espinoza.
You're live, go ahead.
Oh, wonderful, hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Juan Espinoza, I'm a pediatrician and an attending at Children's Hospital Los Angeles, as well as the Medical Director of the CHLA Innovation Studio. And I wanted to call to voice my support for the Kids X Accelerator Program. I, I think it's an incredible opportunity for the City of Glendale to support a pediatric-focused digital health accelerator. While many organizations and many politicians talk about the importance of children, children are our future, the reality is that at least in this country, we do not invest in children and we do not invest in pediatrics. If you look at the amount of dollars that we spend in healthcare for children, it's about 10% of all healthcare dollars spent in the US are spent on kids, even though children are about 25% of the US population. Same thing with innovation, same thing with technology. And the reality is that the only thing that makes a difference in moving the needle on children and children's health are individual organizations, individual people, individual cities who make a commitment. And I think this is an incredible opportunity for the City of Glendale to, to make that commitment, to say that children are important, that children are in fact our future and that investing in technology and investing in innovation in this space is critical so we can ensure that the best possible care can be delivered to, to our children.
Thank you. Next.
Brandon Lee, you're live. Brandon?
Hey, how's it going? This is Brandon Lee from Sidebench. I'm also on the line with Kevin Yamazaki, our CEO, thought we'd just joined us together to see the guys sometime. So I'm calling to support the inclusion of Kids X from CHLA. We're calling in support of Omkar and his entire team. I've personally seen this team working in a lot of amazing ways within the LA community. So to give you a little bit of background, Sidebench, your company, is a tech consultancy with a venture portfolio and we're very experienced working with new startups, digital innovation and all kinds of tech. So with our background, we've really seen a lot of, of potential in, in the Kids X Initiative as well as Omkar and his team. CHLA as a safety net hospital has provided a lot of specialized services to everyone in the community and we think that it'd be a great addition and to have Glendale support with this, it would be, it would be a great, great partnership. And I'm sure that everyone who's listening has experienced the effects of coronavirus, but in that chaos, chaos breeds innovation and all eyes are on healthcare and medicine right now. Omkar and his team is one of the most innovative teams that I've ever worked with and they're equipped to provide the leadership and the focus to, to drive this towards really, really positive outcomes for everyone. I work closely with accelerators and incubators within the healthcare industry, including the innovation in Cedar North County and Texas Medical Centers, internal accelerators as well. And I know exactly what this model entails and I know what it takes to find success. Omkar and his team are fully equipped to make this success for the community and just to illustrate, Omkar and Kelly, a member of his team, they were featured as experts in telemedicine by the American Medical Association there. They're truly like the driving force behind a lot of very innovative initiatives across the LA healthcare ecosystem. And I can't imagine a team more suited to lead something like this. And when it comes to pediatrics, I think that's another consideration that we should be looking at is because it's truly focusing on the future and having an accelerator focused on types of technologies is appropriate. So being tied to the safety net hospital means having access to the patients to inform innovation and new ideas and provide really impactful solutions. So I, I fully support the Kids X Initiative and hope that this is, this is something that will have your full support. And I'm going to hand it off to Kevin, our CEO, and he's going to have some thoughts here as well.
Oh yeah, I think Brandon summarized it very well and represented, right, all of Sidebench's opinion on this, for sure. I do want to mention that CHLA has played a big role for me personally and for Sidebench as we shifted from, well, I guess when we spoke at one of the original Glendale Tech Week, really around innovation within larger corporate clients, much more focused on consumer products that, which is where, where we did a lot of our projects start. But since then, shifting to healthcare innovation and social impact and investment, Sidebench has really, really transitioned and CHLA has played a huge role in that. So I'm fortunate enough to be on their Digital Philanthropy Committee in the early days and that's driven a lot of our new values. And I have to say that Omkar stepping in and CHLA really representing a rare case of getting innovation right, right at the corporate level. That's just accelerated our entire company's kind of commitment to social impact and healthcare innovation, especially in pediatrics. But I cannot imagine finding a better fit team and leader for this initiative. I think that's all we have.
We have more? There's more? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Andrew Jensen, you're live. Andrew? Um, hi, yeah, my name is Andrew Jensen. I am a current administrative fellow down at a large healthcare organization in Orange County. I'm, I'm excited to call in and weigh in on this important discussion. I know that the selection committee and many of those who are calling in have already supported and are recommending the CHLA Kids X Accelerator, but I'm also calling in to echo and, and strongly support the Children's Hospital of Los Angeles Kids X Accelerator. From just listening to the presentation and reviewing all the material that's been provided, I can tell that this CHLA Kids X Accelerator Program is very well planned out. It's going to bring a lot of value to the City of Glendale. It will bring, bring a lot of new businesses, add jobs that are vital in, in the community and most importantly, it's going to serve the vulnerable and sick children. Additionally, as someone who's working in Southern California in the healthcare marketplace, I can attest that CHLA is an amazing organization. It delivers incredible care to children all over Southern California and in the immediate community of Glendale. As an accelerator program like, like this, CHLA one, run by an organization like CHLA is extremely important to the community and the world of pediatric healthcare, which is very underrepresented, especially during the time of COVID-19. I honestly can't imagine a better program for this City Council to support than the CHLA Kids X Accelerator. So thanks for letting me chime in.
Thank you.
Tatiana El Auhudi? Tatiana, you're live?
Hi, I was just calling in support of Grid 110 and Hacker Fund. I'm very impressed with what they do and bring to the community with their tech accelerator.
Thank you.
Anna Safarian, you're live. Anna?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anna Safarian. I'm a Director in the Value Improvement Office at Vazuda Health Hospital. I'm calling to voice my support for the CHLA Kids Accelerator Program or Proposal.
Okay, thank you, Anna.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is all with the calls.
Okay. Any of my colleagues, they want to comment on this issue?
Um, Mayor, I would like to comment.
Yes, Councilmember Divine.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that I think Councilmember Najarian and I are the only council members that were here from the inception on this tech program. And I have to compliment and give kudos to our Economic Development Department, Jennifer. And I have to compliment and give kudos to our Economic Development Department, Jennifer and Cecilia for your excitement, your enthusiasm that you have brought to this program for the last few years. I've attended several of the workshops, the events, and I have watched you get people excited, bring the community of tech together, and this is, I think, a proud moment for all of you. I want to say that, first of all, I'm just like was blown away and so proud and honored that the Children's Hospital of LA would put their trust and entrust their project to our tech program. So, and Hero House, I have to say that both of these offer incredible opportunities for us and not only for Glendale, it seems, but it seems for our, you know, hospitals around maybe the country and businesses all over the world extending. So, I look at both of these. They have good track records. They both have community ties. I'm so grateful that Alex called in to confirm his support of both of these for the committee. So, I'm in support of both of them, but I do have a question, and it's concerning the funding. And we're not just going to give them $500,000. How is this money going to be, this funding going to be allotted to these proposals?
So, who wants to answer the question?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Divine. Our strategy for this is that it would be allocated over the three-year period. So, at the conclusion of the successful first year, and the success would be dependent upon metrics that we establish based on number of businesses supported, programming, and events hosted, et cetera. So, they have to successfully meet that, and should they successfully meet that, then they would be, they would receive the additional funding. We may have to have some pre-negotiated terms as some of these, some of the accelerators may need more funding upfront in order to get going, and that's something that we would discuss. But overall, the intent is that they need to work for these funds annually.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Brotman.
Okay, thank you. And yes, I want to echo the other comments. Thanks to both of you for the work you put in. Actually, this brings back some memories for me because I spent three years at Cisco running their venture capital and mergers and acquisitions operation in Asia-Pacific. So, we dealt with and invested in a lot of companies, and in fact, I was, I invested in the Alibaba IPO, unfortunately not with my own money, with Cisco's money. Otherwise, I'd have a bigger smile on my face. But anyway, yeah, so this is an area that, I mean, I'm familiar with it in general, not with the LA scene at all. So, my thoughts on it are, you know, CHLA is a no-brainer. I just think that's perfect for us, the health focus. I don't think, you know, in the report, it says it's a negative. I know it's, you know, that they're so narrowly focused. I think that's a positive. And the only thing there is, you know, the advice would be to, you know, ask them to be open to look at, you know, really exceptional startups, even if they're only loosely connected to children's health applications. Other kind of associated healthcare innovators, I think, would be good for them to look at, and I assume they probably would. With Hero House, it's, you know, it could be great or it could be a bomb. I don't think there's been much success in bringing companies across, but, you know, if there's one success, it's all worth it. So, I do want to say I'm skeptical. I don't think they have a lot of experience. It looks like maybe three years at most. I don't get a sense that they really have deep ties to LA. Most of their comments are about, you know, Silicon Valley investors, Silicon Valley angel groups, et cetera. Having said that, I think it's interesting enough, given who we are in Glendale, to maybe try this with the understanding that it's like a lot of things in venture, it's going to be completely hit or miss. So, you know, I'll support it. I just, I am just stating at the outset, I'm a little skeptical about it. And then with Grid 110 and Hacker Fund, it's just what I hear from people I know is that they put on really great events and that they could bring a lot of spark to Glendale. And I don't know if there's any other way that we could get them involved with Tech on Taff and with our Tech Week if there's some, you know, I thought we still had some money left over in Measure S. If there's any way we could bring them on, I hear good things about them. Mostly, I've just heard about Justin. So, I don't know anything about Grid 110. Sure, they're great, but I've just heard about Justin, and I think that that could actually, that could actually contribute a lot to the work we do here. So, you know, it's too bad. It's like three flavors of ice cream, and you want to eat all three. But, you know, anyway, great, great job, and I'm on board.
Councilmember Kusakian.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff. Yeah, this is very exciting, especially at a time when we're looking at some serious challenges ahead of us, to have such great responses from the tech community and bringing the focus of tech to Glendale, I think, is very promising. I think it also bears, although I know it's been said by previous council members and councils, it bears repeating to thank Senator Anthony Portantino, who worked to bring this funding to the city, seeing the potential here for the city. And I think part of it, I would assume, to speak for him and for former council members arson onion, was a delegation trip that was done a few years back to go to Armenia and see the emerging tech sector. I hear Councilmember Brotman's concerns regarding the tech companies and this transition from an international market into the US market. And you referenced Israel, which I know developed Waze, the very popular app. But, you know, for the exact same reasons that Israel has been successful, it's what's making Armenia successful, and that's why it's being referred to as the Silicon Valley of the next emerging Silicon Valley-type center in its part of the world, if not internationally. When we went there, we saw a number of companies that already have footholds in the United States that are also doing work in Armenia. And I think it's a good fit with the community we have here, with the ties we have here. We have at least two fast-growing, successful tech companies here that have a foothold in Armenia as well, but it's only the beginning. You know, the Tumo Center, which started in Armenia, is now expanding worldwide. This is a program, a nonprofit, that helps educate youth in programming and entertainment and design, and started in Yerevan. It's been visited by world leaders, and it's now in Paris, and hopefully, we'll get one here in Glendale soon. Pixar, which is a very, very successful app for collage and drawing applications and a social network, has a very prominent presence in Armenia. And the fact that it has been, Armenia is a small nation with very high capital, very great capital and intellect in its workforce, it is able to, because it is surrounded by neighbors like Turkey and Azerbaijan that have closed borders, it has learned to survive using tech, which has been a very significant part of its growing economy. I think for that very reason, we need to take advantage of this at this time. And yes, there is plenty of folks out there that can help us, but, you know, we could potentially have the next TikTok or whatever else app is being, is popular out there, developed here in Glendale. Similarly, I think Children's Hospital of Los Angeles is a great asset to us. I mean, we can't deny that healthcare, biotech, all those are very important, and we have a very strong presence with, given the how big the healthcare industry here is. So, I do like that. And I want to thank everyone for the time that they've put into this. I'm fine with staff's recommendation, and I look forward to seeing what we can accomplish together to help make Glendale have an even greater presence and foothold in tech. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more comments? Okay. Mr. City Attorney, I have a question for you.
Just, I learned that the name of AESA, which is Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America, and I have been member and past president for this organization. I never knew the company, which now mentioned the name, and I don't know anybody in there. I never had any relation while I was there. So, now, should I continue or should I go?
Mr. Mayor, as long as there's no, and it doesn't sound like there would be, that there's no financial benefit to you?
No.
Or any of your sources of income, that this is a private organization, which I understand you're no longer, you're no longer on the board of, or in the years past, and I believe you can fully participate in this decision.
Okay. So, that's what I just want to make sure that, because I never heard about this company even, so I don't want to do something which is not correct. However, as has been mentioned here, I'm very happy to have Los Angeles Children's Hospital to be part of this program. That's all I want to say. And I'm surprised when they went to the hospital, we have to mention here, I don't know if it has been mentioned or not, and they said to the management, apparently there, that there is a $1 million money to spend, and they said, "We don't want $1 million." I never heard that either. So, this is new to me because usually, when you go and offer money, that's not enough, whatever you offer. It's more is needed, as being myself, chairman of nonprofit organization. So, oh, by the way, one more item I have to ask our city. And the chairman of Gorderf Armenian Society of Los Angeles, where these engineers, Armenian engineers and scientists of America, which I said I've been the president in the past, they have a small space which they pay rent for it, but still, the Yerevan is nonprofit. I have no benefit or anything. I'm just non-paid chairman.
I think, under our ordinance, the disclosure was all that was required for that particular item.
I just remember that there are tenants in the building. So, anyway, that's all I want to say. I'm very happy this Children's Hospital is involved, and now, I guess...
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Which is $500,000 to Children's Hospital and $500,000 to Hero House.
Thank you. Now, it's clear. So, is there a second? Second?
I'll second. Divine?
Roll call, please. This was easy, so why I went through all this? My vote doesn't matter here. Okay.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Algejonian?
Yes. Thank you. Okay.
Move to adjourn?
May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Do you have second? All right.
Second.
Okay. So, we adjourned at 4:37 PM or 38 PM. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Should we stay on with closed session?